Good evening and welcome to the August 21st, 2018 Planning Commission Meeting. Roll call, please.
Chair Chase.
Here.
Vice Chair Biassodi.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson, excused. Commissioner Legacy.
Here.
Commissioner Lathene.
Here.
Commissioner Mason.
Here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mason, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the people of this country.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda would be approval of the minutes from May 15th, 2018, June 5th, 2018, and July 17th, 2018. We'll just take those one at a time if you would, starting with May 15th.
Through the chair. Motion to approve the minutes of May 15th.
I second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed or abstent yet, we'd be myself since I wasn't present at that meeting, but they pass. Next item of business will be the June 5th, 2018 minutes of the Planning Commission meeting.
I move to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, saying none, those pass as well. And lastly, the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting on July 17th, 2018.
I move to approve. I second.
Okay. Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, saying none, those are approved as well. Next item would be communication.
Chair Chase, tonight we do have a communication. It's my pleasure to introduce our new associate planner. Her name is Rucha Dandy. Rucha is here tonight. Rucha joined our staff in July of this year. Rucha comes to us with a tremendous academic background. She has a master's degree in environmental planning, a master's degree in city and regional or urban planning, with an emphasis in community design and development. She also has an undergraduate degree, a bachelor's degree in architecture. We are extremely pleased to have Rucha join our team. She'll be working on a whole variety of projects, including our downtown streetscape plan. She is working with BPAC, so she'll be working with our Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And as we know, we have a number of current planning projects that Rucha will help us on in terms of reviewing them and processing those applications and making recommendations to the Planning Commission and City Council. So we are extremely pleased to have Rucha join our team and staff and welcome her this evening.
Thank you.
Very good. Yes, and welcome. That's great. Okay. Next item would be public comment on items that are not on the agenda. If there's anything anybody would like to speak to that is not agendized, please go to the microphone and speak. Saying none, okay, I'll open and close that. Next item, any conflicts of interest for any of the commissioners? No? Okie doke. Well, let's move right on to number five, 5A, which is 764 Santa Lucia Avenue. It's a request for a use permit to allow construction of a 70-square-foot rear addition to a single-story home that would exceed the maximum permitted lot coverage by 100 square feet. If approved and constructed, the total living area of the home would increase by 1,013 square feet, and the gross floor area of the home would be 1,281 square feet, including the garage. A use permit is required per Section 12, 200.030 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. Staff report, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Michael Smith, Planning Department staff. So the project before you, 764 Santa Lucia Avenue, is a request for a use permit to allow construction of a 70-square-foot rear addition to a single-family home that would exceed the maximum permitted lot coverage by a total of 100 square feet. If approved and constructed, the total living area of the home would increase to 1,013 square feet and a gross floor area of 1,281 square feet, which includes the garage. The addition would provide a new second bathroom for the home. The exterior of the addition would be clad in stucco, and the existing finishes would match the existing finishes of the building. The addition would be topped with a shed roof. If approved and constructed, the home would become a three-bedroom, two-bathroom home. The home is located on Santa Lucia Avenue, on the north side of the street between Linden and Poplar Avenues, and the subject lot measures 2,325 square feet, which makes it a substandard lot. And just by the way, across the street is Millbrae, so it's on the border, the southern border of the city. Staff has not received any public comment to notices that were sent out 10 days ago for this public meeting. As I said, the subject lot is substandard in size, measuring 25 feet in width and 93 feet in depth. The existing home has no left-side setback, and it has a 2'9" setback on the right side, where the code would require 3 feet on both sides. As a result of the substandard lot size and the existing building being one-story, the existing building is already over the lot coverage threshold by about 30 square feet, which with this addition will make it a total of 100 square feet. So no matter how minor an addition you've constructed to the building, it would require a use permit. Staff recognizes this constraint and supports the addition because it is minimal in size at 70 square feet. It would adhere to the setback requirements, so it would have the 3-foot setback that is required by code. It is minimal in size, and it would not be visible from the street, nor would it have an impact on the adjacent properties. It measures a little over 10 feet in height. And as I said before, the finishes, we find it to be consistent with the residential design guidelines. The ARC reviewed this project in July and forwarded it to the Planning Commission with the recommendation to provide a landscape plan, which I have in front of me and I'll hand out to you as soon as I'm finished here. So at this point, with this landscape plan, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the use permit, 18001, based on findings 1 through 6 in the staff report and conditions of approval 1 through 22. And this concludes my staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Any questions to staff? No? Okay. Is the applicant present? Would you mind just stepping up to the podium and just giving us a brief?
We do have questions for staff.
Oh, you do?
Through the chair. Just one question on page four. First paragraph, it says here, "Staff recommends that the applicant provide a landscape plan for the front yard with irrigation lines indicated for review by the Planning Commission." Where's that in our packet?
So that's what I, during my presentation, I said I would hand out as soon as I was done with my presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
Through the chair. In the staff report, I'm not in fact noticing any summary of the Architectural Review Committee's review.
That is correct. But the Architectural Review Committee did review it at their July meeting. They were supportive of the project. The only recommendation was for a landscape plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions to staff once again? Nope? Okay. Now, the applicant is present. If you just want to quickly state your name for the record, and it's obviously a brief description of your plan, of your project, but it would just be formality.
My name is Mary. I'm the owner of 764 Santa Lucia Avenue. All I need is just one bathroom, because when the grandkids come over, it's always a fight. So I just wanted to have a bathroom in the back, in the master bedroom, so it would be like a master with a bath. And that's all I wanted. It's not going to affect the front or anything, it's just in the back. And we submitted a plan for the front, and I do want to make it better, because with the grass, with the gophers, you could never keep up with the grass. So I'm going to put like a mulch and plants, and that's it. And I just hope you approve.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions of the applicant from any of the Commissioners? No? Okay. Very good. Thank you. So at this point, I'll open it up to the public hearing, public comment. Would anybody like to speak on this particular item? No? Open and closed. Here, okay, you can sit down now. Bring it back to the Commissioners for discussion, motion, whatever the pleasure may be.
Mr. Chair, I would like to propose that the Planning Commission approve use permit 18-001, based on findings 1 through 6, and subject to conditions of approval 1 through 22.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okie doke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very good. It passes, and it'll be a 10-day appeal period before you can start any work. Thank you. Next item. 111 San Bruno Avenue and 761 through 767 Huntington Avenue. It's a request for a sequoconformity determination, specific plan amendment, planned development district, planned development permit, architectural review permit, and vesting tentative map to allow the construction of a five-story, 58-foot-tall mixed-use building with 62 dwelling units, approximately 7,730 square feet of ground-floor commercial space, with 78 residential parking spaces and 13 commercial parking spaces pursuant to Section 12.96.190 and 12.38 of our San Bruno Municipal Code. Staff report?
Chair Chase, our senior planner, Michael Smith, and I will jointly present this item tonight. I'd like to start off by making a few comments, and then Michael will go into the formal staff report, and then I'll make a few comments at the end of his staff report. This is our second more substantial project in our downtown as a result of the adoption of the Transit Corridors Plan and the passage of Measure N. What we see with this project is that we have two property owners that have come together and are really using elements of the adopted specific plan, adopted in February of 2013. We encouraged in the adoption of that plan that property owners work together to merge some of the smaller parcels in our downtown to create more substantial development opportunities. And this is a case where we have two separate property owners who have done just that with the incentive of having a waived FAR to provide for more flexibility, more creativity in terms of the overall design. With the passage of Measure N in 2014 after the adoption of the specific plan in 2013, there was the allowance to have increased building heights, increased residential densities, and above-ground parking garages. In this particular case, we're seeing a project that's going to be about 65 feet in height within the limit or just under the limit within this area. And we see that the proposed parking is going to be within the standards, both for the commercial and residential components, of the Transit Corridors Plan area. We're seeing with this project the opportunity to link housing with employment, with transportation in an area that's going to become ever more vibrant over time. Truly, the vision of the Transit Corridors Plan is being realized. At the other end of San Mateo Avenue, southern end at El Camino Real and Taylor, we see the plaza going out. It's under construction. That project should be completed at the end of this year or early 2019. So the hard work of this community, the vision of this community in terms of developing the Transit Corridors Plan, and the incentives and measures to get a lagging downtown area, an area that was truly lagging in terms of development and redevelopment, to incentivize the private sector to come together and to build and redevelop is happening. We are very pleased to present this project tonight. Michael will go into the formal presentation, and I'll make some comments further after that. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Again, Michael Smith, Planning Department staff. So the project before you is 111 San Bruno Avenue and 761 through 767 Huntington Avenue. The applicant has already demolished the existing vacant building that was at 111 San Bruno and proposes to demolish the adjacent commercial shopping center on Huntington Avenue located adjacent to the site. And the proposal is to construct a new five-story mixed-use building in its place. The first floor would consist of approximately 7,730 square feet of commercial space. There would be 62 dwelling units, 78 residential parking spaces located in mechanical stackers, and 13 commercial parking spaces, six of which would be located also in mechanical stackers. Usable open space would be located at the podium level of the building, at the rear of the building, and on the roof adjacent to a gym for the residents. The building would have 62 dwelling units, including 10 studio units, 22 one-bedroom units, 29 two-bedroom units, and one three-bedroom unit located on the top floor at the corner. Units would range in size from approximately 550 square feet for the studios all the way up to 2,200, over 2,200 square feet for the three-bedroom unit on the corner. The project would require the merger of the two lots underlying these two buildings, resulting in a lot that measures 28,180 square feet in combined total area. The total area of the building would be 103,235, which corresponds to a 3.66 FAR. This site is located directly across the street from the San Bruno Caltrain Station at the northern entrance to San Bruno Central Business District, and the project site is Catalytic Opportunity Site Number Two in the Transit Corridors Plan. And that's on the over, on the projector here, you see that's what was included as the image for a proposed project back when the Transit Corridors Plan was being adopted. The project right there for Catalytic Site Number Two calls for 9,000 square feet of ground-floor commercial space and 40 dwelling units in a five-story building with 40 residential parking spaces, which was a one-for-one parking ratio. And overall, the big difference here is that with the joint development between the owners of 111 and the owners of the adjacent property at 761, 767, they were able to acquire more land to add more units and create a denser development at this site, which was not necessarily anticipated when they came up with the plan, which just included the underlying site. And as it turns out, they thought the site was over 20,000 square feet, but in actuality it was less than 20,000 square feet. So they actually needed the adjacent site to really make this development happen. It was a difficult site to develop. It is very shallow. So you can see right here, it's a very shallow depth right there, and it's very wide, a lot of street frontage. In fact, it has over 400 feet of street frontage on both San Bruno Avenue and Huntington Avenue combined. And so our goal in a project like this, at such an important corner, was to try to make as much of that ground floor active as possible. So with that, the vehicular access to the garage is located at the corner of the site, or excuse me, at the edges of the site. Access from both San Bruno Avenue on one edge and on Huntington Avenue on the other edge. And so that allows for a lot of continuous frontage that's not interrupted by cars. But what it does is it constrains the parking, so not only do we have a high-water table in this area, which made it difficult to go down underground too far, but because of the site's layout, doing underground parking would have been very difficult, because you would spend a lot of time with the, you would spend a lot of space with the ramps themselves just to get down to the lower levels. So with that, we are, the applicant is proposing to use car stackers. These are pretty popular devices, because they make parking a lot more efficient and allow you to do other things with the building. So last, last week, we had a site visit that all the Commissioners were invited to, to a project in Berkeley, to take a look at some of these. This one, that's being proposed for this development, is this three-high stacker that you see right here, and then there's a pit down below, so you don't have to excavate the site as much, and then you can be a lot more efficient with the parking. These would be used for the residential, as I said before, and then also to be exact six of the commercial parking spaces. This photo right here to the side is the actual site visit, and you can see the cars, how they work, and I think that the site visit was very educational for how people actually use these. We saw a few people actually get out of their cars and drive up to the thing, use the key, get to their space, drive in. There are some constraints to these. We saw one guy hit his trunk a little bit. He said you have to be a little careful. SUVs, for the most part, will fit mostly on the top, the top, the top parking space there. But overall, these are great devices. As I said, there's going to be 26 of them for the commercial, for the residential parking component, and that would provide 78 parking spaces, and they will all be three-high. The project also includes the widening of the sidewalk on Huntington Avenue. You can see that in this image right here, right at the corner. What that would do is it would take away a lane of traffic on Huntington Avenue and replace it with parking and a widened sidewalk right at the corner there. That little kind of mini plaza would be for the public in general. It's not a private space, but it would be somewhat used by the folks who frequent that ground shore use, that ground-floor use as well. And what that means is for traffic coming southbound on Huntington Avenue, when it gets to San Bruno Avenue, instead of continuing through the intersection and having to merge immediately, that lane would be a right-turn-only lane. And then only that middle lane would be the lane that goes through, and then there would be a left-turn lane as well. So the project requires concessions from the TCP requirements for step-back and setback. In exchange for these concessions, the applicant will provide two additional affordable housing units for a total of 11 units in the project. And those two units would both be low-income units, and they would be integrated within the building by lot, by unit size, so unit type, and also by floor, so location. And so this is, these next two slides just show you, you can see them in color. This is not the full building floor plan, and this is also contained in your Commissioner packet and plans. But you can see that the colored units are the affordable housing units, and they're dispersed throughout the building and by unit type. So what the concessions allow, and again, these are concessions that are required to make the project work. The concessions have to do with the rear setback and the upper-floor stepbacks, where the TCP standards require you to set the building back in certain areas. Our goal was to try to get a very urban building at this location, since it is really close to a transit station. And so therefore, we feel that we've achieved that by somewhat eliminating some of the stepbacks and the setbacks. And then in exchange, again, we would get the public, the City of San Bruno would get the two additional units at the low-income level. And just so you know, the project requires 15%, which would have been 9 and 6, and so that would have been a total of nine units, five for moderate and four for low. And so now it is bumped up to six low and still five moderate. The proposed building would have usable open space located at the podium level at the rear of the building, abutting the rear yards of the adjacent residential buildings on Mills Avenue located to the west of the site. The podium is located above grade level, approximately about 20 feet. So the project has planters along the rear of the podium-level open space to try to screen the users of the open space from the yards of the people located down below on Mills Avenue. And then the project would also include a landscape roof deck. This image shows the screening that would be done with, through the landscaping at the rear of the building. And it also shows the architectural treatment that is being used for that, for that wall which would face those residential properties. And then again, there's open space also located on the roof adjacent to a gym. So there's also a proposed parking and transportation management demand measures that are included with this project. And we feel that including those in the project will also help take, alleviate some of the parking and transportation-related issues. Those include, those TDM measures include transit subsidy for residents and employees, and that would be paid for by the owner of the building. It would also distribute transportation, transit-related information to all the residents and employees of the building. There would be an onsite TDM coordinator to help distribute this information so that people are aware of it and know that, you know, that Sam Trans is not that far away and, you know, can help them out with when buses are coming. They will also have a bicycle-sharing program. There's high bandwidth internet on the sites to facilitate people working from home if they choose to, if they're residents in the building. And there's also a number of Class 1 and Class 2 bicycle parking spaces. On each floor, there's a bicycle room for the residents of the building, and then also on the ground floor, there's secure bicycle parking for the employees of the business. I'll leave it to the architect to kind of go over the design with you, but I will say that we worked long and hard with the architect on the design, and what we were taking our design cues from was the adjacent Caltrain station, which was constructed in the last five years or so, and so we kind of used that for our design cues. We held the neighborhood pre-app meeting on this building, so prior to submitting the project for review by the city, there was a neighborhood pre-app meeting, which generated a pre-application letter to the applicant. And then once, and then we also went to the Architectural Review Committee as part of the pre-app process, and then we also went to the Architectural Review Committee after the project was submitted for review. So it's been to the Architectural Review Committee twice, and it's had a neighborhood meeting as well. The first Architectural Review Committee meeting was in November of 2016. The feedback that we got from that meeting was to architecturally treat the rear wall that was facing those residences on Mills Avenue, which was done. Also to incorporate screening at that location, which was done. And then to also add additional information in the plans about the garage doors, and that was also added to the plans as well. And as I said, the project was reviewed after it was submitted. That was March of this year, in 2018. The Architectural Review Committee members had the following feedback. They really liked the wood elements on the building, and they wanted to make sure that that stayed wood and wasn't replaced by another material, and the architect has agreed to do that, so it would be wood. There was concern at that time about the lack of commercial parking. So since that time, the commercial parking at that time was nine spaces. Now it is 13 spaces, so we've gotten four more spaces. There was some concern, sorry, excuse me, there were differing opinions about the color of the building. Some people thought that maybe the bright colors were not appropriate. Some thought that the bright colors kind of made the building look alive and makes San Bruno look inviting. So there was a little ambivalence there. So the colors that you see on the project now are the same color. So the colors that you see on the project now are the same colors that were presented to the Architectural Review Committee at that time. And there was also differing opinions about the asymmetrical placement of the balconies on the facade, on the Huntington Eleva, Huntington Avenue elevation in specific. Again, there was differing opinions, so that has not changed about the project as well. The project was also reviewed by Larry Cannon. He gave a favorable review of the project. And for those of you who don't know, Larry Cannon's our city's consulting architect. So the required approvals for this project require the SEQA conformity determination. Included in your packet is an initial study checklist which determined that there were no new environmental impacts associated with this project that weren't already evaluated in the TCP EIR. We need to amend the TCP itself to allow for concessions to development standards, what I was talking about earlier about the stepbacks and setbacks. And that would be in exchange for community benefit. And in this case, again, it's the two additional units of affordable housing. We need to establish APD. So the existing zoning on the property is commercial, which would only permits commercial uses on the site, so you wouldn't be able to do a mixed-use building. However, we, the APD is set up so that it is consistent with the TCP itself. And that would be, again, to allow a mixed-use building. We have, we need to approve a planned development plan for the project. And that planned development plan is based upon the TCP standards, development standards for the area, which is the station area, character area, or, excuse me, the San Bruno Avenue character area. And then there's also a associated architectural review permit. And there's a vesting tentative map also. And that, that is to merge the underlying lots again and then create both a commercial condominium and individual condominiums for the residential units. And these resolutions are attached to the staff report. And ultimately, the project would need to be approved by the city council. So in closing, the project would be the second significant new development in the downtown and would visually enhance the existing site and would provide an improved visual anchor and northern entry into the city's downtown commercial area. The project would alleviate physical and economic blight at this location. The building is gone now, so it looks much better, but the building sat vacant for over two decades. And so now that that's gone and we can get this new building on the site, we think it would be an improvement as folks look from the Caltrain station platform over the city of San Bruno would be a nice anchor at that corner. In addition, the project is located across the street from the new Caltrain station and within a short walking distance to both Samtrans bus routes and the Barge Station, which makes it a great urban setting and helps the project's occupants and residents reduce their need for automobiles. The proposed project and design is consistent with the vision of the TCP as outlined in the staff report. And again, these concessions the project is asking for, we think that that helps create a more urban building at this location. So this really closes my staff report, but staff is recommending that you adopt the attached resolutions to the staff report, recommending to the city council for approval.
Thank you, Michael. Great report. So do we want to have the architect? Or Dave, how do you want, how do you want to proceed? Do you want to have the architect come up and give his take on this?
Chair, yes. I think at this point, if the architect, the project team would come up and do their presentation, and I would make some comments after that. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, commissioners. My name's Moshe Lina. I'm the architect for the project. I want to thank, first thing, entire planning department for shepherding us through this long process. And I want to thank Michael and David for all their help all along and what a great presentation they gave. I'm going to concentrate, most, many of you know this project from design review meetings, but I will touch on a few major architectural issues and then leave it open for questions. And I also have an updated materials board that I'm going to pass to show you. It's a little heavy, but I'll hold it up so you can see the materials up close. This is, this is the rendering that we produced, and the concept is very simple. We knew we had a long site and narrow, and we didn't want the building to look institutional. So we started off at the corner by having a taller element, not necessarily a tower, but just a taller corner and to relate to the tower that exists across the street at the transit center. Then the next issue that came up was how do we reduce the scale, reduce the massing, and create an architecture that is as complex vertically as the city is horizontally? So with that in mind, we created these four modules that project out, that are inscribed. I have one. I have one. Thank you, Michael. You see these, these four elements? And in between them, we enlivened each one with a wall, a special wall that has a special material, a textured panel, and also, of course, windows and balconies. And balconies are offset from each other for variety. I know there has been a comment about trying to line them up, and I do appreciate that. We have done that in other buildings. Also vertically, we didn't, we didn't want this to be a block. What we decided to do was to have a canopy that goes all along the first floor, separates the first from the second floor, but it creates rain protection, it creates sun protection. It also allows for lights and signage. And it just really brings the commercial spaces out to the street. We, as Michael said, we widen the sidewalk. We are hoping for a small café with limited food service, not a major restaurant, mind you. And a small café over here, we have a rendering of that. So that's, that's really, and then on the, on the top level, we set the entire fourth level back so that it would not be imposing. And in between the two elements, we have on the fourth floor, we have a community garden with a gym so people can exercise. I'm going to try, okay, this is the view from the other side, from the south. As you can see, vertical elements are allowed to punctuate entrances. This is the entrance. This is the stair and the lobbies. The lobbies also are open. They have glass, so the illuminated lobbies can be seen all the way up the building. We also have trees, and we, by virtue of the fact that we have been able to widen the sidewalk, we have created some additional short-term parking along the street. And this is, this is sort of an architect's, designer's visualization of how a small café would look on the corner with some planter boxes that would provide protection from the cars and, of course, tables and chairs and umbrellas. As you can see, the canopy that runs all around the building can hold signage and so on. Next, this is our materials board. Visual materials board is showing some of the materials. What I'd like to do is go to the next slide and then I'll show you the physical material boards, which will be a lot more interesting. I don't believe I need to go through all the numbers because Michael has already done such a great job. As you know, we have 62 units. We have 78 parking spaces for the residential. We have 13 parking spaces for the commercial. And the number of units is clearly noted in your packets, and Michael has already gone through that. So thank you very much, Michael. This is the ground floor plan. We have worked very hard with all the departments to have the correct number of handicap spaces, to have the right number of parking, to have all the toilets necessary for the commercial, and to have loading for the commercial and the residential when people move in and out. And of course, we have been working very closely with PG&E to make sure that we can locate all the utilities and make sure that none of these utilities are sort of sitting out there on the sidewalk to destroy the look of our building. This is the second floor, which is, the floors are similar until you get to the fifth floor. But as I say, in the rear, we have continuous open space, but it's a larger space. And as you can see, the lobbies connect. The lobby connects to the rear open space. It also has glass so you can be on, in the lobby, and you could look at the train station, at the transit station. This is the fifth floor where we have the two, the, sort of the long building splits into two sections. And in the center is a courtyard with landscaping and outdoor furniture. And there's a small gym for people to exercise when they want to. Whoops. No more? Oh. So I guess, okay, all the other items you already took care of. Oh, thank you, Michael. It makes my life a lot easier. Thank you. I'm going to just take the materials board and walk in. This material board has been to two design reviews, a couple of neighborhood meetings. One thing I'd like to point out that's different is that we were finally able to...
Excuse me, we need you to use a microphone, please.
Excuse me? Oh. Oh. Well, what I can do is I can...
She's coming.
And I can... Oh. I'm sorry.
Beautiful.
So. Hello? Is there a button there? Hello?
There you go.
Okay, this material that we are suggesting for the railings because people were very happy that we're having wood along the balconies, railings. And this is a product called IPE, which is very, very, very water-resistant. However, it turns very dark. It starts this way, it ends up this way. But I think we can use it. I think it'll be good. We will also look at some other options. This is the stone mineral panel that will be used for the terracotta elements. And this is the aluminum that we're thinking of using. This is the perforated metal for the sun shades. Here are some of the colors. We have a stucco panel in this cream color, which would be over here. And we have the ground floor walls and columns will be covered with porcelain tile like this. So they won't be just painted concrete. They will actually be covered by a nice material. And we have a number of different patterns of tile that can be used on the sidewalk in various areas, near the entrance or near the coffee shop. We have modern planter boxes, and we have a lot of trellises for sun shades. But we also use the trellises architecturally. They are made out of aluminum, and they create a very nice terminus to the building, at the top of the building. That's really the... That's it.
Can I ask you a question? What was that, the metal there, the perforated holes? Was that one going to be used for again?
Excuse me?
The one with the perforated holes, yeah. What's that? Yeah, what is that used for again?
Well, the trellises on the street level will be covered by some material that will prevent rain from coming through. But when you're up at the upper levels, we really don't need to do that. What we want to do is just filter the sun. So this is a perforated material that we'll use along with aluminum structure. So it's basically, it's like lattice, but it's a little more modern-looking.
Okay, thanks.
So that's really all I have at this point. I just want to thank, again, everybody. I thank the clients, too, who are here. The two, Larry Lee and the Welch family, for coming together to do this project in San Bruno. And if there's any questions, I'll be available.
Any questions of the architect from commissioners?
To the chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Before we get into the details of the project, I have a global question. And I'm not sure if it's staff or the applicant that needs to answer it. I would like to understand what's the timeline from here on and what are the schedule drivers for this project?
Why don't we do this together? So staff will provide some information, and then if the architect perhaps could go to the lectern as well. And we can ask him some questions as well. As far as next steps, the Planning Commission tonight is being asked to make a recommendation on the entitlements before you to the city council. Based on your action tonight, the item could move forward to the city council for consideration at a notice public hearing. If the city council receives that and takes an action on that, a positive action on that, the next step would be for the design team, as directed by the property owners, to prepare construction documents and to go forward with submitting those construction documents to the city's Building Division of Community Development for plan review. As far as the immediate next step after Planning Commission, assuming an action moving it forward, this potentially could go forward to city council in 60 days or so. And then in terms of preparing the construction documents, perhaps if, if the architect could step forward, I would appreciate it so that we could ask him a couple of questions. In terms of his expectation as far as preparing construction documents, I think that's something we need to ask the architect. And then it would go into plan review. Plan review would probably take, depending on the completeness of the documents we receive, could take 60 days or so. A permit could be issued for construction. And then if the architect could speak to the anticipated construction period. So I think the architect could speak to length of time to prepare construction documents and also the anticipated construction period for this project, please.
Yes, the construction, we feel very good about all the relations that we have developed with this project. So we decided to start construction documents a little early to save time. We hope to be able to have construction documents reasonably bundled up by the time we get city council approval. We don't know that date yet, but that's our goal. So within a couple of weeks after that, or within a short time, we intend to submit our plans to the building department, and those plans will be reviewed by a company called CSG, which reviews it for code compliance and other issues. And we estimate, even though we get comments within 30 days, we estimate this process takes anywhere from eight weeks to 12 weeks, depending on the number of times and the number of revisions that we have to do. So if you assume that after, you know, about three months or so, three and a half months after city council, we could be close to gaining a permit. It does take some time to pull a permit because there's a lot of issues that have to be taken care of, payments, fees, and other issues. PG&E has to provide additional information. There is some soil remediation that has to be done. Full-fledged construction would start probably approximately a month after we receive the building permit. building permit. And we are scheduling this project for not more than 18 months. If possible, sooner, but if you say sooner, then eventually it gets delayed a little bit. We're trying to be realistic. We're going to want to keep it at 18 months. We definitely would like to be in the ground sometime beginning of next year. And that's our hope and our prayer. Thank you.
Through the chair, just a follow-up to that question?
Sure.
So this was submitted on March 1st, 2017. I think this is my question for staff. So it's going to be two years from the submission to break ground and then another 18 months to build, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
And is that pretty standard for a project like this?
I think a project like this, given that it's in our TCP area and we did require, the city council required, per the TCP standards, that a project like this go through a pre-submital, a pre-application review, as you recall. So we had this project go for a neighborhood meeting, then a pre-application review, so that we would get early comments. The architect and the property owners could take those comments, use those in terms of developing their formal designs for applications. So the process is more thorough in the TCP area. It does take a little bit more time. This is a site that's a little bit sensitive, as has been mentioned, in terms of a high water table and some soils issues, so we wanted to look at that very carefully, which we have. And that's one of the reasons, as the senior planner pointed out, for the parking design that we're looking at with this project. And by the way, the senior planner, myself, and other individuals from the team, the applicant team, did visit the project along with one of our commissioners. And we did see an operating project with a similar stacking system, mechanical parking system, that seemed to be working very well there. So yes, it did take a little bit of time, a little bit longer than we would typically expect, but we wanted to be thorough and careful in terms of some of the issues involuntarily. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, through the chair. David, for our purposes this evening, this will be the last action the planning commission takes on this project, is that correct?
Yes, potentially, depending on what you do tonight, yes.
Thank you.
Through the chair? I have some questions. First of all, I just want to thank the applicants for the additional parking spaces. I was at the architectural review committee, and I know that was a big issue for me, so I appreciate that you looked into how you could make that happen. I wanted to start with the resolution in regards to establishing community benefits provision and ensuring consistency with the proposed mixed-use development. So here, I appreciate the two additional affordable housing units for low-income households. And my question is whether it's for staff or the applicant, how are you determining the makeup of what is rented and what is purchased?
With this particular project, the applicants are proposing to map the project. And part of the application is a besting tentative map to create condominium units, airspace condominium units, both for the commercial component on ground floor and for the residential units above. What that means is that those individual units, once mapped and recorded, could be sold. So the project could result in both commercial condominium spaces on ground floor, as well as individual units being sold. It is not required that they sell either the residential units or commercial units. They could rent or lease either or both. However, as they map the project, that has certain implications in terms of costs for the project and also, I think, benefits for the community. In terms of a rental project where there isn't a map, the city would not be collecting parking lieu fees. So once the applicant makes the decision to go forward and map a project like this, the city is entitled to parking lieu fees. I think that's a benefit. Also, with our current code, in terms of affordable housing, when the project is proposed to map, be mapped, that triggers the inclusionary provision for affordable housing. And as you may recall, in terms of our work on that ordinance over time, that the first choice of the community is for units on the ground when it's for sale. The property owner or applicant could petition the city council to pay an in-lu fee or construct off-site. So in this case, by mapping the project, the units could be sold, they could be rented, but by mapping, they're required to include units, and as our senior planner indicated, they are going to be including units, and they will be paying a parking lieu fee. And in addition, in terms of concessions, I want to be clear about the concessions. This is a provision that we have brought forward as a companion, resolution, a companion item to this package. These are limited. The concessions we're proposing in terms of the amendment to the specific plan would be limited to certain development standards such as setbacks and step backs. It would not, it would not apply to parking or height. Those are not to be considered in terms of concessions that could be requested. Parking and height are not concessions that would be considered as part of the proposed amendment with this project or moving forward with that proposed amendment. And in terms of benefits, given the fact that this site is directly across from a Caltrain station, in our downtown, close to employment, the idea of, as a benefit back to the community requiring affordable housing is something that we as staff encouraged, and the applicant is proposing two additional units, again, as spoken before, and they would be at the low-income level, which, again, if, as you recall, with our RENA numbers, those are difficult units to get. These would be deed restricted. They would be deed restricted for a minimum, as a for-sale project, a 45-year period. So whether they rent or they sell, the households that would occupy those units would have to meet certain criteria, whether low-income households or moderate-income households, and there would be a third-party administrator to ensure that the occupants meet those criteria over time. So that, I hope I responded to your question.
You did, but I just, so it sounds like we don't know right now.
Well, I think you have to, actually, they have an option, and maybe the best thing to do is to ask the applicant. By mapping, they can sell, they're not required to sell. I'm not sure of their intention, and maybe that's more a question for the applicant.
Does someone, one of the applicants want to answer? So just to be clear, I'm looking at, I was looking at the resolution, but I'm also looking at Exhibit M, the Affordable Housing Plan. And it says here that all 11 proposed units will sell or rent at below-market rate levels as follows: six low-income units at 80% AMI, five low-income units 100% to 120% AMI, total 11 units, 17.8% of the 62 units in the building. But it doesn't clarify what the intention is to sell or to rent those locations.
Through the chair, if I could.
Sure.
You know, while you can certainly ask that question, it's a very fair, legitimate question, I think that technically, that with the mapping and the Affordable Housing Plan as proposed, they would have the option to sell or rent or lease. What's critical here, or important, I think, is that in either case, whether for rent or for sale, they would need to meet the affordable criteria for either low income or moderate income, based on what the unit is in terms of its assignment. It may be, I'll say premature, for the property owners to absolutely commit to selling or renting. It is very common, and it's up to them to respond, obviously, but it is very common for projects like this to be mapped with the opportunity to sell, and that for some period of time that the units are rented. And we also, by the way, we have commercial and residential units here. Both would be mapped. So, and we have separate property interests. As we mentioned in the staff presentation, two property owners have gotten together in terms of doing this project, which is, we think, a good thing. But there will be at least two initial property interests and perhaps more over time, given the mapping, as individual units could be sold. So I think it's a legitimate question, but I just want to make sure that the applicants are also careful and thoughtful about their response as well.
Yeah, I, it is a little early. A lot of these decisions are made closer to when the building is built, and you could take a look at the economy and the market, and what is, what is selling and what is At this point, Larry doesn't have a final idea as to what percentage. It could be 50%, it could be less, probably not more than 50. And as far as all the 11 affordable units, those will, he has not decided yet how they will be handled, whether rental or for sale. But as you can see in our tables, we have to comply with the income levels that are specified each year. So as those change, so will the price change or the rent change accordingly. But we can't, you know, this requires a lot of, it's a complex process. It is a complex process that all cities are dealing with, and it takes a while before you really know the final configuration. And I think David is right, and that is a little too early to make a final, to make a commitment, but that information will be available in time.
Okay. And just so that you understand the importance, if I remember correctly from the housing report, there were 15 units built last year, and 14 of those were ADU. And so the need for affordable housing is great, even greater after the chief gave his report to the city council stating that the majority of homeless people that we have right now in San Bruno are from San Bruno. So if there is something that we can do to keep San Bruno residents here, that would be ideal. And so when I see the affordable housing component, it makes me very happy, but I would love to know what that breakdown's going to be. So you don't have to answer that, I mean, that's just a call.
Right. It will be known as soon as we can, as you know, we have sort of 17%, which is a pretty high percentage.
Okay.
I think the highest cities around are going at 20%, but most of them are 15 and below, so we are at 17%.
Okay. And then another question on the same, just sticking to this issue. So in the same resolution, when I looked at the proposed language in Attachment A, I wanted to make a recommendation on the language at the very bottom. So specifically, the sentence that says "helping in creation of affordable housing beyond what typical market conditions would provide" and "above and beyond city affordable housing provisions," to take out "helping in" and just starting with "creation of affordable housing beyond what typical market conditions would provide and above and beyond city affordable housing provisions, comma, including low-income housing." Because as we've discussed, low-income housing is a different income bracket than just regular affordable housing. And then on the next page, starting with "creating," it says "creating new jobs for San Bruno residents." I'd like to recommend putting in "creating new permanent jobs for San Bruno residents" and "support city economic development vision."
Can you specify the Exhibit and Attachment?
Yes, I'm sorry, Exhibit, it's Exhibit D. Attachment A, and my understanding is the red is what's being proposed, the red language change.
Yeah.
So again, removing on the very bottom, it's the third line down, starts "helping in creation of affordable housing," so taking out "helping in" and just starting with "creation of affordable housing." And then at the last, at the bottom of that page, starts with "and beyond city affordable housing provisions, comma, including low-income housing, comma." So it suggests adding "including low-income housing." And then the third suggestion on the last page of Exhibit D, on the second line, it says "creating new jobs for San Bruno residents," and the suggestion is changing it to "creating new permanent jobs for San Bruno residents." And of course, I need my fellow commissioners to support me on that, but that's all I have for that resolution.
Through the chair?
Yes, Commissioner.
Is this the time where, I'm sorry, I'm asking Director Waltering, is this a good time to propose some modification to the resolution, or is this something we should keep for the end of the discussion?
I think this is something that you should hold, because right now, actually, this is the time that the commissioner should be asking more points of clarification. Since Commissioner Mason, you have gone through that resolution, if you wouldn't mind marking it up, and perhaps we can pick it up from you and kind of look at it. And then as you come back to your formal discussion, you may want to bring that back up again. And in the meantime, there would be, you know, public comments and further commission discussion, and would give us some time to look at and evaluate your comments. And there may be some comments also from the applicant on that. But if we could handle it that way, I would appreciate it.
Okay. Pardon me. Well, at this point in time, I guess I could open up to the public comment. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this? Uh-oh, I think I jumped the gun. Excuse me, backtrack, Kevin.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to use you as a jumping off point, because I do have some questions about affordable housing. I think much of what I was wondering about was just addressed. There will be management of these affordable housing units for 45 years dedicated to low-income housing? Is that correct, what I understand?
Yes, through the chair. What we would require in a case like this is that there would be a third-party administrator that would be established for the term, and there would be regular reports. So at least yearly, there would be monitoring of the households in terms of income and eligibility as people move in and move out of units, or as individuals purchase or resell the units. We would want to make sure that, of course, with the deed restriction, it would run with the land, the title companies would typically pick that up. So in terms of disclosure, as a property would be offered for sale, let's say they're being sold, that would be picked up, indicated to the potential buyer, and the sales price would be kept at a below-market rate, given household size. It would have to equate at that time for what is either low income or moderate income based on household size for the term.
Okay. And additionally, I was wondering, I think if I'm not mistaken, I saw in some of the exhibits that there's also very low income as a bracket in that structure. And I was curious how the units were selected and distributed on... I was curious how the units were selected and distributed on that term.
Sure, be happy to respond to that. The moderate income and low-income units require a fair amount of subsidy from the property owner. The very low-income units or extremely low-income units require typically a very, very substantial amount of subsidy. It's more typical that in terms of very low or extremely low income, that those households would be addressed more in, I'll refer to it as an affordable housing project, where perhaps Bridge Housing and Eden Housing, one of those affordable housing groups or organizations would cobble together funding for an affordable housing project, trying to reach those income levels. In a project like this, the moderate and low-income households require a fair amount of subsidy, but oftentimes, reaching into the extremely, extremely low or very low income is oftentimes difficult in terms of being able to, on an ongoing basis, for the developer and then subsequent owners to basically continue that subsidy. It's a deep subsidy, is my point.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, that helps a lot. Okay, and if you could also describe in a little more detail what the park-in-loo of fee is?
I don't have the specific amount for you, but it basically is a formula that's in our municipal code. It relates to several factors, including the market value of one acre of land, and then looking at, in terms of the population that you would expect from a particular development, and then looking at our requirement in terms of how many acres per thousand population. And it is a formula that would get us to a certain dollar amount that would then be contributed to a park-in-loo fee fund. In a case like this, we wouldn't be looking for dedication of, say, a park on site. In some cases, let's say a subdivision, as an example, Skyline. You worked with the Skyline Residential Project not too long ago. In that particular case, there were a couple of pocket parks within that development, you may recall, and also improvements to those parks. And there was also kind of a recreation facility on community college district property, all adding up to and offsetting the park-in-loo fees. So there are options. You can either pay a fee, or in the case of, say, a spread-out residential subdivision where you have more land, there may be a dedicated park to the city for public use with improvements. In this case, given that it's an urban design, we would not anticipate a physical park element as part of this. We would expect the fee. I can't tell you, I don't know up hand what that fee amount is, but it's per code, and it's related to, again, like I said, the value of one acre of land, the population density, and our standard for how many acres of park or whatnot and the value of that. So we would follow that formula, and the applicant would be required to pay that fee. It would go into a park-in-loo fee fund, and then it could be used for acquisition of parkland or improvement of parks, park facilities in our community. So that's how it would work.
Great, thank you. It's good to know that it's for parks and not, well, good, bad, whatever, not parking.
For parks.
Free parking. I do have a question. I visited the site today and noticed that there is on Lot 3 in the plan, it's the little greenhouse that's on San Bruno Avenue that's adjacent to the farthest northwest point of the proposed building. I know in that area that the second floor is going to go up, or, I'm sorry, the platform is going to be up approximately two stories, about 20 feet off the ground. And I'm curious how that interacts with the structure that's existing there and egress and everything. I'm sure it's been thought through, but I'm just curious.
I think in this case, I would like the architect to address that, if you would please, and then our senior planner can address it as well, but I'd like to start off with the architect, please.
Yeah, we are aware of that property. That property is, that building is very closely located to the property. I don't think it's original to that house and was probably built illegally. There is nothing we can do, because we need the structure to hold the parking for our building. And in many ways, there were initial efforts to purchase that property and make our project larger, provide additional housing, but the owner unfortunately was not interested in selling. And if people have non-conforming buildings that are right up against the property line, there's really nothing we can do. If you build up against the property line, you have to have the correct fire ratings or the building department and the fire department are not going to be happy. And this is a situation where somebody put that up there. I believe it's not legal. I don't think it was ever done with a permit, but I don't know. But there's nothing we can do except to build against it, and they will have to do what they want. This frequently happens with people who just decide to buy a window and put it right on the property line. It's an illegal window, but, and I understand that they love it, but there's nothing we can do. We have to build up to our property, and it will be up to the owner of that property to decide what he wants to do. We will stay away from it, you know, enough, a few inches, to allow us to build, and we will certainly make sure that none of our construction work affects any, anything about his house or his building structurally. That's part of our contractor's responsibility, and that's very clear. But what happens if he has windows there, he's not going to be able to look out, because he's looking out onto somebody else's land. So.
Thank you. Perhaps staff would be able to tell us a little bit more about whether that's permitted and what that means for them?
Looking at the street view of the project right now and the building in question, it does have both a light well and two windows that are directly on the property line. It is unclear, I don't know what rooms in that building are serviced by those windows, so I think it would take a little bit more information, probably need to reach out to them in some way. I do know that they did show up at the pre-application meeting, the very first pre-application meeting we had, and the plans haven't changed substantially in that particular area of the project, and they did not raise this as a concern or question at that time. But definitely, I could look into it further.
Okay, I just didn't know if this is something that, I assume that this had already been addressed. But there's no health or safety concerns as far as what's proposed abouting this property?
No.
Okay.
I mean, I will say that, I will add that the window in question appears to not be a bedroom window. It is a smaller window with a fairly high seal, which would lead me to believe that it's either a bathroom or potentially a kitchen, but most likely a bathroom.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to reiterate, in terms of the law and the code, property line windows are not permitted unless they're three feet away. If they are less than three feet away, they have to be fire-protected, they have to be raided, and it's really, he is the owner of the property, he's responsible for that. There's nothing that we can do to help him. If he had come to us and asked for some, something, but he didn't, he never participated in the process, you know, so there's really nothing we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I did want to make a quick comment, but I know parking is a hot topic, and all of the commissioners here are sensitive to those concerns, and I was fortunate to sit on the last architectural review committee meeting and really had no experience with parking stackers and had a lot of questions. And I am very thankful that staff and that the applicant arranged a field trip to go and visit these stackers in action in Berkeley, and it was an extremely valuable time. I have little kids and safety in parking lots is something I deal with every day, and I was really skeptical until I went and I saw it. And it may not be conventional, but it's very efficient, and surprisingly, it seemed pretty sturdy, pretty safe. I think that a family that's towing a whole bunch of kids and shuffling little, you know, baby carts and strollers and stuff may not opt to live there, but I think that it's wonderful that we're able to add the parking that's going to be needed to put really needed housing and especially affordable housing in our downtown, right in the middle of a transit corridor. So I wanted to say thank you, and I wanted to tell the public that it's a pretty, it's a pretty cool and a pretty efficient way of parking, in my opinion.
Very good. Any other questions?
Through the chair?
Yes.
I looked at the recommendation in the draft transportation demand management plan, which is Exhibit J, and I didn't see if there had been any consideration given to adding one or two spaces for some, something like Zipcar or another similar service to have shared vehicles available.
There is no code requirement to add such facilities, but if that's something that you wanted to add, we can definitely look into that.
That's something I think helps with the parking situation, because it encourages residents to have fewer, if any, cars.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. It's a two-part equation, because we would have to reach out to the several companies that are out there and then come to an agreement about having them locate inside the building. And then there would be an access issue that we would have to resolve as well, but we can definitely look into it.
Through the chair?
Resurrection?
Question about Exhibit G, just for, I guess, practical purposes. Number 77 states that general construction hours are between 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Then number 78 says vibration-generating activity shall be limited to between hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Then it says construction operations that require installing traffic control measures on San Bruno Avenue shall be limited to between the hours of 9:00 AM and 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday. So I'm just curious why all of the different restrictions?
Through the chair. Certain construction activities have more of an impact on the public than others, and so I believe that those conditions came from both building and public works. And so their concerns were that the larger equipment would have more of an impact on folks who were trying to sleep, so they tried to circumvent those hours a little bit more. And the same thing with public works, looking at when they wanted to close down the streets, whenever construction activity would take place and occupy the street. So that's where those hours came from as well. But general construction hours are still the broader hours.
Just seems like it creates an obstacle for the applicant, as opposed to just having a set, you know, set number of hours every day that's consistent.
What staff typically does is have a construction, pre-construction meeting with the contractors working on a project, and as the senior planner indicated, it's not uncommon when there's work that's being done that maybe create more vibration or louder to have more restrictive hours in those cases. What staff would do in a case like this, or in general, we would have a pre-construction meeting with the people involved, review the conditions of approval, have the building inspectors, the contractors present at the meeting, so there are clear understandings in terms of things like varied hours based on activities. So those matters would be reviewed with the contractors, and the inspectors would then review and enforce over time.
So by approving this resolution, though, are we agreeing that these are the set hours for all three of those? Or by, yeah, we are, right?
Yes, you are, yes, you are. And then those, these conditions would go forward with the project. They would provide guidance to the contractors and to the staff, the building inspectors that are monitoring the project during the construction period, yes. Again, these, as was indicated, these are recommendations that are coming from the various departments or divisions that are working directly with these matters.
Right.
Any other questions?
I have a question. And I'm sorry, I wasn't a commissioner at the time that Plaza was approved, but what is the, how many units is Plaza, and what's the parking at Plaza?
The, the number of units is 83, 83 residential units. It's 80. It's 83 residential units at the Plaza, over 7,000 square feet of commercial. And the number of parking spaces is 106 parking spaces.
Total.
Total, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, no more questions? All right. At this point, why don't I open it up to a public comment? And anybody who wishes to speak on this project, please go to the podium, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. I do, I don't know if you have a timer, but that is normally what we allow. Hopefully, we can, if you have questions that can't be answered immediately, we will do our best to get the answer before the end of the evening.
Thank you, Kevin. My name is Stephen Seymour. I live on Mastic Street. First of all, I'd like to thank both the architect and the applicant for the design. I like what you've done there. I've also liked that you added in options to try to get people out of cars. That's wonderful. And that you worked with the public to make changes before you submitted these. Those are, I'd like to compliment the applicant and the architect on that. I happen to live a block and a half away from 406, 418 San Mateo Avenue, and I do see both properties as different. I mean, this particular property is much closer to the train station, but I do want the commissioners to be mindful of the fact that the property at 106, or 406, 418 San Mateo Avenue should have a lot more parking in it. It doesn't, it doesn't, it's not at the same junction as this 111 San Bruno, so they're different. But 406, 418, as David said, has 106 parking spots for 83 units. And there is no room in the adjoining neighborhood for additional cars. At that particular spot, the parking for the commercial area was waived by the council, so there are six spots on the bottom for commercial and 86, 83 units on the top. We're going to have a problem up there. So I'd just like for you to be mindful of that with this particular spot. I do see them as, they're different because of their location. Although at this spot, there are 62, I think 62 residential units, there are 105 beds. So if you look at it basically by bedroom, there's 105 beds and 78 parking spots. I'm not sure what the correct equation should be, but I can tell you that the public at large is... I can tell you that the public at large is very concerned about the buildings in the transit corridor impacting our neighborhood streets because we don't have any additional parking on those streets to begin with. So, you have a challenge before you, not just at this location, but throughout the transit corridor. And I want to go on record as saying I really want to see the transit corridor developed so that we have more walking options, more shopping areas, more commercial, but at the same time, I want it to be done in a mindful way so that it doesn't impact the neighborhoods next to it. And so, I just ask for you to take those things in consideration. Today for me has been a great education because to see how you all work well together and the questions that were asked by some of the commissioners, I appreciate those questions and...
Great. Thank you for your comments and we appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Good evening. Russell Steins, 851 Reed Avenue. Couple things. One is, while the public did vote on Measure N to go ahead and raise the height restrictions, we didn't vote on the minimum amount of parking that the TCP requires. And it is minimal. I don't know if anybody in this room lives on the east side, but I have many friends that live on the east side and struggle greatly with parking. And I would appreciate that we make sure when we make, when we have a building here that we put enough parking in there and we do not continue to impact the neighborhoods because let's say you guys are up there saying seventy-eight spaces, oh boy, seventy-eight spaces, but let's say you're wrong. Let's say people don't take the train and there's a hundred and twenty cars for that development and fifty cars come into that neighborhood over there. And if you lived in that neighborhood, you'd have a real problem. So, I'm here speaking for my community. I don't live in that neighborhood, but I'm speaking for them and we are concerned about what's going on here with the parking requirements and they need to change. That's number one. Number two, the building looks great. Again, I see a beautiful building. I would like to see the backside of the building and I would like to see how close it is to the people that live behind it. And I would ask you never to allow any, any kind of less requirements than the setback that are, have been required forever. Never allow them to change because they're too minimal as they are and you guys are going to crush neighbors. So, that's my comment. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anybody else wishing to have a comment or speak on this particular item? Nope. Seeing none, I will now close the public comment. Bring it back here to the commissioners for, are we going to go with a, how do we want to deal with the resolutions first of all? Obviously, Commissioner Mason has some verbiage that she would like to have addressed in at least one of the resolutions, if I'm mistaken. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, how are we going to proceed with that?
Through the chair. I think that as Commissioner Mason or other commissioners may have specific comments or suggestions about the resolutions, we could hear that. It sounds like there's one resolution or an attachment to one resolution where there are some suggestions, I would say. And if that's the case, you could go to that resolution. We could discuss that and go back and forth. It would be good to know if there are any other suggestions in terms of edits, changes, to know that. And then at a point where you're comfortable with getting the information you're looking for and have a sense of direction, you should go resolution by resolution in terms of your action. So, you've got a number of attachments. Go item by item, attachment by attachment, and look for a motion, a second, and then take a vote. And we would be happy to try to answer your questions or help you through that process.
Okay. Let me put it this way then. How many commissioners have suggestions on resolutions that are before us this evening? And if you have them, I guess like David said, need to bring them forward now and then we can hopefully address those.
Mr., oh, you want to go first?
I'm really quick. I just had a typo, but it has nothing to do with the content of the resolution necessarily.
And what you might do is just as we get to that item, just indicate that and we would naturally pick that up.
Okay.
May I?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I feel like with, with three days to review this amount of documentation, I don't feel like I've had enough time to review and see if I have suggestions. And if, after discussion, I plan on asking for continuance.
Understandable.
Through the chair, I do, I have a couple more questions if that's okay. So...
Chair, go ahead.
So, on the, I guess this is A, okay. On A 1.0, I noticed at the end of the parking, so all the other parking spaces are three, six, nine, twelve because they're stackers and I understand that, but at the very end it says eleven, twelve, thirteen, and then eight, nine, and ten, on the, all the way on the left side. Is there a reason that those are different than the other seventy-eight?
Exhibit, Exhibit I, you're looking at.
This is, it's A1 and I'm looking at this.
These ones right here. Yep.
So, the area you're speaking about would be the stackers that would be proposed for employee parking within the commercial area. Is that correct?
It's the, right, it's adjacent to hot water heater room.
Yes. Those would be mechanical lifts, stackers. The intent of those would be that they would be used by employees or staff within the commercial portion of the project and they would be assigned.
So, that's an additional six spaces then, correct? Because it's seventy-eight and then you have those six. Am I wrong?
So, sorry, there's a dividing line right there between the seventy-eight and eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen.
Correct.
That dividing line delineates the commercial parking from the residential parking. So, there's a gate. You couldn't go any further. So, the architect, there's a total of thirteen commercial parking spaces and so that's why it's numbered as such.
Oh, I see. Okay. By any chance, is there any space available for like motorcycles or like smaller spaces that we can just try to fit more parking? I know it's a stretch, but I want to make the request.
Through the chair, perhaps the architect could respond to that in terms of the space that may be available to add, say, a parking space or spaces for motorcycles.
As I said, the site is narrow. We utilized as much of it as possible and we went to three high parking lifts in order to get seventy-eight spaces. We have thirteen spaces for commercial and of those, there are two parklift machines that will be devoted to employees that need long-term parking when they're working in the commercial space, in the commercial spaces. So, there's really no additional spa, you need to, we wanted to take a lot of utility stuff and put it on the second floor. We had a lot of room. But unfortunately, our utility companies are very stubborn about having everything on the ground floor and everything where they can locate it immediately, which means that that took away, you know, there's over, you know, there's half a dozen major elements for power, for utilities, for water, for gas, meters. All of these have to be located on the ground floor. If any of that could be moved upstairs, and there's no reason why it can't, except there's a company that exists and it's called PG&E and they make the rules. And you can't violate those rules or you'll never get your building built. I'm being very frank.
So, the bottom line is then that we don't have any more space. Is that correct?
Excuse me?
Is the bottom line then that we don't have any more space?
We don't have any more spaces. We could look for some, but I can't promise that we have space for motorcycles. We do have seven additional parking spaces on the street that were created as a result of the widening, plus two spaces that are for loading. So, there's no reason why one of those parking spaces on the street can't be subdivided to, for three or four motorcycles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would that be up to parking, what, who would decide how they could subdivide a particular parking spot?
Through the chair, responding to your question, that would be through TSBC. That would be through the Transportation Safety and Parking Committee in terms of could we look at a space and divide it in a manner that would accommodate specifically motorcycles? So, that is something that could be evaluated. We can put that down as a suggestion if that's your direction, but that's something that we couldn't agree to at this point. It would need to go through TSBC for review and ultimately on to City Council. So, that is something though that could be evaluated.
And then, through the chair.
Go ahead.
And Exhibit F, under cable, San Bruno Cable TV will provide the distribution fiber optic cable from the outside into the MPOE. So, I just wanted to confirm San Bruno Cable does have the fiber optic. That they're actually going to be the company that's providing the fiber optic, as it says here, which I think is great.
These conditions came from the cable department, the cable group.
Great. And then on the next page, under fire, it says if current water system is not capable of supplying demand, a fire pump may be required. When would this be known, whether the fire pump is required? Okay.
That issue has been responded many times to the fire department. We have hired a consultant who did a complete analysis of how much water is available, both for residential use and commercial use and for the sprinkler systems that are required. And yes, it is, it's okay. We have the documentation. That has been responded. I think some of those comments are just to ensure that that's the case. But as I said, that comment was in three or four of the comment iterations that we went through and it was, responded positively by our consultant, who is a water engineer.
And did the consultant say that it is required or that it may be required?
No, that the water is available for the needs of the building, both for residential use, commercial use, and fire sprinklers.
So, is that...
So, there is enough pressure and there is enough water available on city streets to be used for the purposes of this building and a special pump is not necessary, at least as we know today.
Okay, so then that would stay in May. And then, would there be generators in case of an emergency at the building? Would there be generators at the building in case of an emergency?
No. Emergency generators are not required by code for all buildings in most of the communities that I know in California. Emergency generators are sometimes required in situations where there are special hazards, but not for residential buildings. Sometimes for handicapped in order to enable elevators to take people down. The code requires an emergency generator for that, but that would be a pretty minor generator. It wouldn't be something like a large generator that would keep the lights on if we happened to have a, you know, a blackout or something like that. No, there's, that's not a code requirement.
Okay.
Through the chair, if I could, I apologize, but on that matter, I know that as we did a site visit, looking at the mechanical parking systems, these stackers, we talked to representatives of the system that was installed at the location we visited and the people we talked to indicated that a generator could be part of the package, the mechanical lift package. And the cost, as I recall, was a lower cost, under $10,000, as I recall. And I would recommend for the mechanical parking system for the residential component, at least that there be a backup generator in the circumstance that there's a power outage so that there would be the ability to, you know, get in and get out of the lifts.
Thank you.
And then my, my last question will be on, under police. It's on number 51. It is highly recommended that the applicant consider installing a video surveillance system. I know it's a recommendation, but is that already planned in place, I would imagine? Great, thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay. So...
Through the chair, if you would like, if you would like to go back to the language that Commissioner Mason was discussing earlier this evening and we could look through that language. And I've got it here in front of me, I believe, and if we could go through that and try to address the concerns or suggestions, I would appreciate that.
Okay, I'm fine.
So, under Exhibit D, Attachment A appears to be page one, starting with taking out helping in. So, right after general plan, there'd be a semicolon and then a capital C, creation of affordable housing beyond what typical market conditions would provide, comma, and above and beyond city affordable housing provisions, comma, including low-income housing, semicolon, assisting in funding implementation of prioritized community projects, comma, such as those contained in the walk-in bike plan, semicolon, creating new public spaces in Plaza, semicolon, creating new permanent jobs for San Bruno residents.
Were there any other comments?
Not for this one.
Okay. So, if we could go back, if you don't mind. I think the helping in, that could be struck and just go to creation, creation of affordable housing beyond what typical market conditions would provide. If you could help me and track you as carefully as I wish I had, can you continue on from that point and highlight your suggested changes?
So, what typical market conditions would provide and above and beyond city affordable housing provisions, and then comma, including low-income housing?
Typically, we use the term affordable housing. Affordable housing covers the full spectrum. We typically avoid, you know, the term low-income housing but affordable, which covers the full range.
Yeah, I do, I am aware of that and I'm still suggesting that we put in including low-income housing. It's a completely, it's a, I know it's included under the umbrella of affordable housing, but low-income housing is a different income bracket. And even though this isn't going to require it, you could be including, but not limited to low-income housing, but I want to make sure it's in there.
Understood. So, if I could make a suggestion, I think I understand what you're trying for. Instead of low-income housing, housing affordable to low-income households.
Yes, that's fine.
If you would go on, please.
And then on the next page. And then in the next page, let's say prioritized community projects such as those contained in the walk-in bike plan, creating new public spaces and plazas, creating new permanent jobs for San Bruno residents.
I think with that comment or that suggested addition, I believe that the applicant's representative may have a comment about permanent, I believe.
Construction jobs such as this go from about a year to two years. Hardly any of the contractors are permanently on the site, nor are their employees. We cannot interfere with a contractor's organization and tell them how many of the people that they put on the job have to be permanent employees of the construction company or the subcontractor and how many can be temporaries. Once the project is built, none of the people that have worked on the building stay. Obviously, there will be a few people that do maintenance on the building. There will be a manager. There'll probably be, you know, people like that as there are in most, you know, larger apartment buildings. And those could be treated as permanent jobs, but I have never seen a condition of approval that actually requires that we create permanent jobs. We are not an employer, we are not, we're not the government, and we are not the kind of company that would create permanent jobs within that area.
Through the chair, if I could, you know, respectfully interrupt. I think there's a misunderstanding about what we have here. This is not a condition of approval. This is proposed amendment language. This is amendment language that would apply to this project and other projects that may be seeking specified limited concessions in return for community benefits. And what's outlined here in this language would be the types of community benefits that could be offered for the limited and specified concessions. So it's not necessary that every project that's seeking a concession would offer new permanent jobs. It could be affordable housing or some other community benefit as specified here. I don't see a problem with permanent jobs as something desired here in the community. And in this case, what the applicant is proposing is the affordable housing, and that's what you're focusing on. So I don't see any problem with adding permanent as something desired by this community in terms of obtaining a permanent job or jobs for requested concession. And I don't think it affects this application.
That was my understanding as well. Thank you.
Is there anything else then?
For Exhibit D, no.
Okay.
That was it? Okay, well, I guess at this point, we have all the answers to all the questions and all the comments for that particular and the other resolutions. Is that correct? Are you okay with the answers that you've been given so far?
Yes, thank you.
So I'm going to bring it back for consideration and reading, I guess, these amendments or resolutions, excuse me.
Then roll call vote.
And a roll call vote, of course. So I suppose we'll start with the first one, if I have it right in order. Resolution of the San Bruno Planning Commission recommending the City Council amend the San Bruno Transit Corridors Plan, TCP, to establish a community benefits provision and ensure consistency with the proposed mixed-use development located at 111 San Bruno Avenue and 761 through 767 Huntington Avenue. So I got a question. Do we need to read the whole, the entire resolution here?
No, you do not. Just the heading and then Chair Chase, I would suggest in terms of, I think, your proposed motion or your direction here, Commissioner Mason made some suggested changes. So you may want to incorporate those or suggest that those be incorporated in a motion for this resolution. And we have, by the way, written them down, so we have them.
Okay, but by reading the resolution, wouldn't the individual who would have to second it, then wouldn't the changes that are, you know, being asked to occur, wouldn't that then be up to the second or is that going to be by the motion maker?
It would be by the motion maker.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, then I will go that route and I will suggest that we include that in the resolution, the comments that were made.
I can summarize those if you'd like. I think in terms of Attachment A to that resolution, we struck helping in and just started that one sentence that was described by Commissioner Mason with creating. We then, continuing that sentence, added after affordable housing provisions, including housing affordable to low-income households. And then further on in the language, we added permanent to jobs, new permanent jobs. I think those were the suggested changes.
Okay. So we include those then. So there's the first reading. Now we need a second, do we not?
It's the motion.
Is that a motion? That is a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we need a roll call vote, please?
Chair Chase?
Aye.
Vice Chair Biassodi?
Aye.
Commissioner Legacy?
As previously stated, I have not had enough time to propose edit-level changes to any of the resolution, although I do support the ones that have been suggested by Commissioner Mason. So I must vote no to adopting, to forwarding the resolution to the City Council because I need more time to review.
Commissioner Lathene?
Yes.
Commissioner Mason?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next resolution. Do we have any additional verbiage or comments on this particular one, which is the zoning map? I don't recall if we had any additional. Okay, good. So this resolution is the Planning Commission of the City of San Bruno recommending the City Council adopt an ordinance amending Section 12.96.110 of Title 12 Land Use of the San Bruno Municipal Code to change the zoning map from C, general commercial district, to a P D, planned development district, for properties identified as 111 San Bruno Avenue and 761 through 767 Huntington Avenue. And I will put that out there as a motion.
I'll second.
A roll call vote?
Chair Chase?
Aye.
Vice Chair Biassodi?
Aye.
Commissioner Legacy?
No, for the reasons stated above.
Commissioner Lathene?
Aye.
Commissioner Mason?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next resolution. Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Bruno recommending approval of a planned development permit and architectural review permit for the proposed mixed-use building located at 111 San Bruno Avenue and 761 through 767 Huntington Avenue. So there's a motion.
Through the chair briefly. I had, I just caught a typo in here. It was on the third page, I'm sorry, it says page five of 12, under general conditions, condition number two, third line, towards the right, it reads the Plaza project. I think that was probably a holdover from previous.
You're right.
I don't know what the name of this project is, 111?
It's, we're referring to it by address. So we'll add that in. But thank you.
Yes.
Through the chair, this is one where I'm going to actually go back to Director Walter Ring, but is this where we would, under number 23, place the condition of approval, that there be a generator for the parking?
I think what you should do is just indicate that in terms of the mechanical parking system being proposed, that you're recommending that a backup generator be included in that aspect of the project and we'll add it in to the resolution appropriately.
So we won't be, technically, we won't be adding any other additional conditions of approval, just put it accordingly into whether it's 22 or?
Exactly. We'll look for the right location to place that requirement. We're hearing that there's an interest in doing that, if that's your direction, we will make sure it's included.
That works for me.
I'll support that.
Okay. So we have that in the form of a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please?
Chair Chase?
Aye.
Vice Chair Biassodi?
Aye.
Commissioner Legacy?
No.
Commissioner Lathene?
Aye.
Commissioner Mason?
Aye.
Thank you.
And lastly, the Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Bruno recommending the City Council approve a vesting tentative map for the project located at 111 San Bruno Avenue and 761 through 767 Huntington Avenue. And that is a motion.
If that's a motion, I'll second.
That is a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Chair Chase?
Aye.
Vice Chair Biassodi?
Aye.
Commissioner Legacy?
No.
Commissioner Lathene?
Aye.
Commissioner Mason?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, that's all the resolutions, if I'm not mistaken. Okay, well, it's not really a 10-day appeal period, is it? I mean, basically, at this point, we're going to bring it forward to the City Council with the recommendations, correct?
That's correct.
All right, well, then I do believe we are done with this item, are we not?
You are. Thank you.
One last thing, Kevin, if I may. This gentleman, he was asking for an image of the back of the building.
Yeah.
Oh, here, I have one for you.
Oh, yeah.
You're very welcome.
Okay, well, since we are through with that item, I'd like to, just like to thank everybody for their patience and, you know, their comments and public and everything. It's good to see it all come together and it's going to be a little bit of a, you know, timeline here, but I think it's going to be great. So thank you once again to everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, item six, discussion, city staff discussion.
Item six, a city staff discussion. So as we do at this time during the agenda, we're looking for volunteers for the next Architecture Review Committee meeting. That meeting is going to be September 13th. And we are looking for three volunteers, please. I can see that Chair Chase is just eager to say yes. I can see it in his face.
Well, you know what, it's because I work grave, so it's kind of like it's not going to be easy for me.
And I was going to offer to buy you a beer after the meeting.
I don't drink.
You can take me.
I'll volunteer, whatever.
You can take me. I'll volunteer.
All right. I'll do it.
I'll volunteer as well.
Now who do we have?
We have so many.
Well, you don't want to go.
I said I don't want to go. I'll be an alternate, how's that?
Okay.
So we do have our three volunteers and one alternate.
So we have Vice Chair Biassodi, we have Commissioner Lathene, and Commissioner Legacy, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Planning Commission discussion, any?
Through the chair.
Any more discussions that we need to deal with here?
Oh, through the chair. I just wanted to thank, in my notes, I don't want to forget to thank staff because I know this particular project took a long time. And Friday night, I think we got our packets like approximately around nine o'clock, maybe 10 o'clock. So thank you for all the work. And I just wanted to also comment that I was really excited this week to go down to a new place in downtown called My Busy Town, My Busy Town. It just opened and I'm really excited to take my kids, but it's a kids' indoor playground and they do birthday parties and they actually have partnered with Atlas Pizza, who also opened this year on San Mateo Avenue. And so Atlas Pizza is actually providing the pizza for birthday parties. So really exciting, downtown's really doing well and picking up, so just wanted to let everyone know. Thank you.
I'd like to add that Commissioner Mason had suggested, I think I got a recommendation to go to the Mexican Bakery downtown. The other day I did and I ordered a few pastries and I ended up with a whole bag of pastries and took them home and they were fantastic. And thank you for the recommendation, it was very good. I'll be back. It was great. If I could, and I'm sure the commissioners may have some other comments, but I am going to be retiring, as I think some of you know, I think many of you know, at this point. My last day of work will be Friday, this coming Friday. And so I want to say that I have thoroughly, thoroughly enjoyed the opportunity to work for and serve the city of San Bruno for the last five and a half years. And during this period, as you know, as I first came aboard here, the community was bringing forward the Transit Corridors Plan. And one of the first, I think it might have been my first city council meeting and leading up to that, was working with the staff, the existing staff, to package. And obviously, they did the majority of the work and had been working on it for four or five years. But I had the honor to be there as the city council formally considered and adopted the Transit Corridors Plan. I believe in that plan. I believe in that vision. That was one of the reasons why I applied for this job. I had done my research. I looked at San Bruno and I looked at its downtown and I saw tremendous opportunity. I had reviewed the plan. I had talked to people here in the community about the effort. I was very impressed. I feel very, very, very fortunate to have been a part of the implementation of that plan. And tonight is the second project moving forward in the downtown. Others are moving forward as well in the TCP area, but it's being realized, I think, for the commissioners and for the community, I think it's important to understand that these projects take a long time. It's going to be six years from the adoption of the TCP to see an opening of the Plaza project. This is bringing together a lot of different people. We saw that tonight with the Welsh family stepping forward, working with Mr. Lee, Larry Lee, working with the TCP to do a project, a project that really implements the vision of the Transit Corridors Plan, bringing housing, employment, jobs linked to transit, creating vibrant places, bringing down buildings that have been long vacant, idle, obsolete, vandalized, and seeing new life breathe into the San Bruno downtown. This commission, this community should be commended for your work. It's being realized. It's important to realize this is a long-term plan. It's a long-term plan. It doesn't happen overnight. As you can see, six years for the Plaza, this one tonight, we heard the timeline, sounds like three years to me or so, still, before that building is ready for occupancy. But it's not just about the private sector. It's also about the city and maintaining that vision. As you saw downtown being kind of disrupted, I'll say, for some time, and the merchants were fantastic, just absolutely fantastic, as the city put in water and wastewater sewer infrastructure on San Mateo Avenue. When you look at the TCP, the Transit Corridors Plan, and you look at the implementation plan, the action plan, it talks about, yes, incentivizing private investment and development, and we're seeing that. But it also talks about other things that need to be done, like putting in the infrastructure. That's occurring. We saw that the last few months and, you know, people really work together. I went, you know, I used a number of the stores downtown. I had to go in through the back door oftentimes and I heard mumbling, but I also saw people proud of their proud of their downtown and proud to see things come together. And they did it. They were commendable. We're going to be working on, Rucha is going to be a huge addition to the staff, the streetscape plan. So as the underground infrastructure goes in, it's creating that vibrant public realm. It's looking at Posey Plaza, Centennial Plaza, the streetscape. What can that be to really create an inviting, more pedestrian-oriented place for the people of San Bruno, the visitors, the people who live and shop there? Rucha and others will be working on that with you. So the streetscape plan is coming, infrastructure, streetscape plan. We are working on a comprehensive parking management plan. I know that people are concerned about parking. I understand that. But you can't hold up development and development opportunities, it can't be linear, it cannot be linear. You need to kind of work with what's working. The city shortly, very shortly, it's, you know, I have a draft that I've been looking at, it should be finished over the next week or so. A downtown comprehensive parking management plan that's going to look at, is looking at, and will be shared with the community and discussed. The community has about 1,600 or so parking spaces, both on the street and off the street, some privately owned, some publicly owned or controlled. And those parking spaces, to start with, can be better managed. We could look at, the community can look at pricing. We don't pay for parking. The community can look at its time limits. The community has a fair amount of parking, actually, in this downtown, but we don't have and we should have wayfinding signage. Where is that parking? How many spaces are there? Those are things in the short term that can be done to help address some of the concerns that people have. Looking at pricing, looking at time limits, looking at wayfinding signage. In the budget, we're looking at cleaning up some of those parking lot areas. We have eight public parking lots in the downtown. Repave them, better light them, make them more safe, keep them clean. All those things would help. And, and over time, the idea as these projects are being built, the city will be looking at adding capacity, adding parking structures, one or two. Parking structures centrally and conveniently located in the downtown with the concept in, in the TCP, in the Transit Corridors Plan. You recall this, you worked with this. Park once. The idea is really, we have the parking spaces now, the surface parking, but over time, there'll be a couple of parking structures centrally located. The idea of reverting to suburban parking standards is not the vision of the TCP. It's not looking at IHOP and that sort of configuration. It's compact, it's vibrant, it's shared parking. It's encouraging people to use transit, to walk, to bike, and, and to look forward. This community is planning buildings for the next 50 to 100 years. It is not a time to go backwards. The idea is to look at changing technologies, go forward, hold the vision. It's a good vision. So I encourage you, as commissioners, to, to work with your plan, work with your staff, and, and maintain the vision. Thank you.
Well, I'm kind of surprised that you're retiring. I didn't know anything about it. I'm definitely gonna miss you. You've done a great job. I look to you for a lot of, a lot of advice during a lot of these things, David, so you've been a big, big plus for the city of San Bruno, so thank you. And what other item? October, I'm gonna be, will be my last meeting as well. So I've had 19 years or 18 years and it's time for me to step down, because it's getting a little too hard with work. So I'll be shortly following you.
Thank you.
No problem. All righty, well.
Through the chair. I'm sorry. I have to, I just, hang on. I wanted to say to David, I'm both sad and all emotional at hearing of your departure from our, our great little city. But I'm really excited that you may be able to put your great mind and resources to use in the greater Bay Area. And you've been a great asset and a very patient teacher. So thank you very much from a brand-new commissioner.
Thank you.
Through the chair. Commissioner Biassoti? So Dave, when you first got here, you and I had lunch and I asked you about your vision. And we talked about your family, we got to know each other, and to sit here tonight and hear you speak about where San Bruno is and our vision, it's like you did it. Good for you. Good job.
That's good. Thank you.
I wish you a lot of luck where you're going.
That's good. Thank you very much.
Through the chair.
I would also like to thank David. I could not think of a better planning director to start with when I joined the Planning Commission. And thank you very much for all your help and also for the staff you've built and the relationship you've built between the staff, the department, and the Planning Commission. You have been so very helpful and also just really nice to talk to.
Thank you. Thank you.
I also through the chair, I just wanted to say thank you because I learned, I've learned a lot in the last couple of months, largely because Director Waltering has taken the time to talk me through specific items. And I don't, I have a feeling we're gonna see each other again, so, but thank you very much. I'm not gonna say bye, but thank you very much. I've learned a lot from you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, I think that is definitely the consensus.
Through the chair.
Pardon me?
Through the chair.
Yes, please.
I would like to thank you as well. You have been so resourceful and, and, you know, the institutional memory and it was certainly entertaining and very, very useful to see you handle the various surprises we've had.
Thank you.
I hope you will find something to do that will be fun for you, to fill all this time that you will have available now.
All the time. Sleep would be a good thing.
Sounds good.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Comic relief is over. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Kevin.